Before we get our meeting started today, I'd like to ask Commissioner Langston to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to ask Commissioner David Ashbrook to say a prayer for us.
I feel it's a pleasure to reply from the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your hands. Lord, we'd like to thank you for this day. We'd like you to watch over this commission as we do the work that the citizens have entrusted us to do. Please watch over the panhandle in this time of recovery and rebuilding and resiliency, and please do something with the folks in Tallahassee and Washington DC. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, now this meeting is important to the city commission to order. We'll start out with a consent agenda on April 2nd. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Ashbrook, second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lowery. Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes by the board. All right, building the board.
We didn't have a very big change in numbers from the last two weeks, but we've had fifty demolition permits, two hundred and seventy-five residential re-routes, forty-five commercial re-routes, two hundred and five residential remodels, thirteen commercial remodels, thirty-seven temporary power poles, eighty-four electric service repairs, thirteen accessory structures, five new single-family structures, twenty-six temporary restructures, and seventeen ICC letters.
I got a question for you. New home permits, new construction permits, what's the timeline in getting those out?
With complete package, it's been about three days turnaround.
Three days, okay.
It's been pretty quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Bill Kennedy in y'all's graduate report for us on?
There's no date at this time. We're still working on our plan moving forward to expend the rest of the TIF funds in accordance with statute, and the plan will be moving forward from there.
Our attorney has been held up at the red light. He told me just a minute ago on the phone he was at the Piggly Wiggly. So if we can just hold off on further in the meeting, just for about five minutes maybe, until he gets here so that he can speak to his part on the page, I would appreciate if anybody would object to that. He should be in, let's say, just momentarily.
Does it want to have a recess?
We'll recess for five minutes. All right, everybody, we'll get started back with our meeting now. Now, to our attorney.
Apologies to the board and mayor. I got called for ten minutes of Mexico Beach and then the red light, so I do apologize.
We all hate that red light.
Appreciate your deference. Only first issue under City Attorney is the golf cart ordinance first reading and request to advertise. This matter, as the board well knows, is an issue that's been ongoing at this point. I believe Mayor Patterson asked that this be adjourned. This is without the insurance requirement, which was the recommendation, ultimate recommendation from the committee. At this point, I would ask for a motion for the first reading and request to advertise. There would be no other action at this time because it'll require two readings.
All right.
Motion to read, first reading for ordinance five fifty.
Motion, our Commissioner Ashbrook.
Seven.
Second, our Commissioner Langston. Any further discussion?
I've got one item. Trying to find it. I was reading through it today, and I believe I found a place where it does still reference required insurance. So I believe it's just a matter of, yeah, on page eight of our packet, under B, it says, prior issuance of a decal shall require proof of ownership, proof of liability, insurance, and a valid driver's license.
Yes, that's, that was my fault.
So that is going to be struck.
That would be struck.
Okay, that was always hard to confuse.
So would that part being taken out, a first and second still stands?
Motion stands.
Any more discussion from anyone?
I know we had a committee of citizens that worked very hard on this, so we need to tell them thank you if you have the opportunity.
Sure.
All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries by the.
All right. Ordnance number five five oh, an ordinance to the city of Port St. Joe Fargo authorizing the use of golf carts upon designated municipal streets subject to specified restrictions, providing for conflict and separability, providing for repeal of all previous ordinances related to golf cart use upon designated streets, and providing effective date. That is, concludes the first reading of the golf cart ordinance number five five oh. Boat dockage agreement is the second heading under City Attorney. I know that Mr. Anderson met with individuals employed by the St. Joe company, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Anderson to get that up there.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Commissioner, did have a meeting yesterday with Mr. Patrick Murphy and Daniel Feudle from the Joe Company yesterday in reference to utilizing the city park for boat dockage. Had a good conversation among the items that we did address or that need to be addressed are going to be water, power, utilization of the city property ingress and egress. What they're going to do from this point, they're going to go back and talk with Mr. Gonzalez to see if we can finalize an agreement, hopefully in the next few days. What I would ask is that we keep this on the agenda for the next meeting, but allow staff to continue to work it through that because we, ultimately, once we get an agreement in place, we still need to work on the water and the power. Mr. Grant was working on the water yesterday. We need Duke Energy to work on power to the places as well because the boat captains will need both of those to be able to utilize that dockage on there. So at this point, if you got any questions, I don't know if you have any questions, but yes, we did meet with you.
Would you say that the meeting seemed to indicate that the St. Joe Corporation was more willing to work with the city than previously prior to the meeting?
Yes, sir, it was a good meeting yesterday.
Glad to hear that.
Is, uh, any other board member having anything on this?
Yes, sir.
Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public?
We appreciate y'all, the people that do it for a living. We appreciate y'all kind of helping us. We'd like to continue working, making sure it's into this community, and...
Can I get you to come to the podium?
Oh, I'm sorry, y'all can hear me good. I'm around here. Well, I know you're hearing, I'm that bad.
Oh, Miss Charlotte sometimes can't pick it up on her microphone.
That's all right.
Yeah, that's what it is. Yeah, we're going to have you in there there. We're going to do everything we can.
On my half and Bill's half, and maybe a couple more to do for a living. This is my thirty, I don't know, thirty-eighth year, maybe. I didn't want Michael to put me out of business. I have a hundred days booked already on Jacob's boat. So that'll bring a lot of people. That's six times a hundred. I'm not very good on math, but, you know, and their families too, it'd be a thousand people probably, you know, that will come and spend money, eat at Ronnie B's, eat at Co's, they'll eat all the restaurants. So it is, you know, it's, a lot of people don't see the bottom end of this. A lot of people are employed from here, that, you know, your fish cleaners, your fuel. I know St. Joe Company wouldn't, you know, they're not in here, but Jacob and I, and I'm sure Bill got, when that fuel got to four eighty-nine a gallon, we was burning a thousand dollars worth a day, and both of us run over a hundred days for three years in a row. I'm not very good on that math, but that's somewhere around six hundred thousand that we paid. So, you know, there's a lot of money spent, and I would hate for this to be my last year.
Would you ever be in Kansas?
Y'all can help us. We certainly do appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We thank you for the business you bring to the city.
Yeah, well, it's a lot.
It works both ways, you know?
You know, it's not just a boat. There's a lot of people that's going to need some help getting their feet back on the ground.
Sure.
And, you know, basically, we're at a position that, you know, deserves money along to the restaurants, to the whole town in general.
Right.
And, you know, here, there's going to be some places to stay built, you know, the inner coast of Mariner. You know, I might be one of the ones that puts a lot of people in.
There you go.
We appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my portion of the agenda. Again, I do apologize for being late. That's obviously not something that happens on a routine basis for me.
Well, the doc you paid, like fifteen minutes, call it even.
That'll work. That would be a fair trade.
Jim?
Yes, sir. The first item we have in our old business is a presentation from Mr. Mark Smith from SVP. A continuation from the last meeting Commissioner Ashbrook brought up about considering a storm coordinator position on there, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Ashbrook and Mr. Mark Smith.
Mark, come on. Sure. Glad I brought a sport coat and did my hair. Well, thank y'all for having me. I know that I wasn't able to attend last time that this commission discussed this position, and my colleague Anya was here and talked about the work that SVP has been doing in the community all across Florida. After Hurricane Michael, we had a team here from New Orleans about as soon as, literally, they could drive, and they stayed in East Pointe and worked here in Port St. Joe for weeks with Ms. Diana Burkett and the Christian Community Foundation, with Mr. Joe Taylor and the Conservation Corps, and Muckton Guided Homes all across the city, shared materials to help people fight contract fraud and get the assistance that they need. But we know a lot of people are still hurt in Port St. Joe and still need a lot of assistance, and that we think that the city is a key part of the recovery. The city has the ability to advocate for citizens as a group as opposed to individuals trying to help themselves, and you have the ability to influence large pots of money from state and federal resources that other people can't access. We do know that you all are working your butts off, that the city staff is very busy, and the city commission is as well, very busy, and also that an impact like this has never happened in Port St. Joe in a very long time. SVP every day works in communities that have been impacted by disaster. We were founded in New Orleans after Katrina. I started with us in New York, so this is what we do. We help communities rebuild. And so we've raised money to help place a person here, working with the city of Port St. Joe, to coordinate the recovery of the disaster and recovery efforts here with the city. There's a cost match with that. It's a fifty percent cost match. Now, we are also working to place this person with multiple communities, so the more communities that they work with, the more cost match goes down. And I've had two meetings this week, and I have more meetings with other local communities where this person could work with. So the cost match is thirty-two thousand dollars, just a little bit over that in the proposal that's outlined. I believe it's thirty-two, two twenty-one. But if another community comes down, that gets cut in half. And so I am expecting that we will have at least one more community come on, possibly two. It will be dependent on how much time the resilience and recovery fellow, which is what this position is titled, will spend with each community. We don't want it to elude the impact that they're having, but we also want to save money to the city. We are anxious to place this person. We have already got internal candidates. We are ready to make an offer as soon as this position is approved, and we can place someone here very quickly, within thirty days. So I'm anxious to discuss this position, and I'm anxious to get it approved because I really want to put our team to work here in Port St. Joe.
Is this a yearly agreement?
This is one year. We would be very much open to the possibility of an extension if the city is interested in that as well.
And the person you're looking at to bring aboard, are they very experienced in this kind of world?
Yes, sir. So the plan is to be to put someone who's already existing within SVP's organization so that this isn't, there's no learning curve. We place somebody who's familiar with community-wide recovery, working with government, working with nonprofit organizations, and then they're going to work directly under me and SVP's leadership. So our CEO, who co-founded the company, my boss, the chief strategy and innovation officer, as well as J.R. Sanderson, who recently joined our team. He's a US Army Colonel, and he was the governor-appointed disaster recovery coordinator for the state of South Carolina for Hurricane Florence, Hurricane Matthew, and managed over two hundred million dollars in government recovery funds and rebuilt two thousand homes in two years in South Carolina. So I'm not trying to pad his ego. He just knows what he's doing, and this person will be responsible to them and to the city commission. And so the way we think about it is we're providing a body and boots on the ground to chase down the goals and the priorities of the city with the experience and the advice of SVP's leadership, and they'll live here in the community and work here, and hopefully, if we can find some space in the office, they'll work right along the city staff to push these priorities and goals.
I have one question. The next item on our agenda is actually a public assistance consultant. How do you see yourself fitting in? I mean, we don't want to double-do any duties. How would that person interact with the PA?
So we don't specialize. Our focus is housing and the housing-wide recovery. Infrastructure and economic development are incredibly important. People can't get to work without roads. However, as a nonprofit organization, we really only focus on housing recovery, so I see that there will be support there. People can't live here if they can't get in and out, but I think that's going to be support. There's not going to be overlap in recovery. This is really going to be focused solely on housing.
Do you also, do you also see a potential for having walk-ins from people in the community that are having trouble with housing? This is an open position where the public can come in and express their concerns about their individual homes as well?
Yeah, and this person would definitely be experienced and able to work with them. This person's not going to be a case manager who's going to help directly connect them to resources, but this person will be responsible for knowing all of the resources available. So who can do rebuilding? Who can do case management? Who can help with small donations if people need items and get them directly connected to those resources?
Okay. Is that the day-to-day duties of that particular person?
So the day-to-day duties are, the way that we think of it, are threefold. So the big one is data. There is a lot of data available. FEMA has collected all of this information. SBA loans have gone out, national flood insurance loans. All this data is available to nonprofit organizations and to the city government, but it's a lot. I have access to most of this data, and it shuts down my computer every time I try to open the spreadsheet, but it is incredibly important to understand where the gaps are in assistance left needed in Port St. Joe, individual residents. And so this person will be responsible for compiling that data and providing a report to you on what is left to do here in Port St. Joe and who needs recovery. I know that's a big issue because of personal identifiable information and not making that type of data open to the public, and so having this position working for SVP but contracted with the city separates that issue, so they don't have to make that information public, but they can also still access it and report it to you. Once we have a detailed report of the ongoing needs, they'll work with the city to identify goals and identify funding sources to go out and help the folks who are struggling, and then build the recovery programs and bring in other partners to actually provide services. So the day-to-day will be a bunch of data upfront, and then once we identify the goals and those are agreed upon by the city commission, just start driving forward, making progress.
I mean, guys, we, I talked about this at the last meeting. There was kind of a proposal, and I asked him to reach out to each of you. I hope that you've had enough time to consider it. You know, I would like to make a move on this. There were three things that we took back from Rosemary Mary, and that was a storm coordinator position, grant writer, and an in-house planner. This is kind of the first phase of that plan on the three positions that were considered critical under a storm. I'm ready, I'm ready to vote on this issue today.
How will we match it? When will we get the funds?
I would be comfortable to take BP funds because a lot of what we're going to be doing is going to be, potentially even reimbursed by FEMA, this position, potentially. Our PA will let us know if that's possible, but I would propose the BP fund for this one.
I think, I mean, I'd be more comfortable if they could probably pick up another municipality to cut that figure in half. Also, be more comfortable, I know we have it, I know Mr. Anderson, along with other county staff, had met and decided on a PA for us. Do we want to wait and bring them on board before we go this route?
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, and I know they're two different things, but...
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Did I speak to you on the phone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm the same person.
My name's Mark Smith. It's pretty easy to forget.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I Googled you today.
Hard to find, too.
Yeah, it was, quite a few came up. But in line with Commissioner Lowery's suggestion, I believe I asked you, had you approached Gulf County?
Yes, sir.
And the answer was, you did speak to Gulf County, and they had not responded or pretty much said no, I think would be fair to say.
So they had not responded, but in the time since then, I'm meeting with the county chairperson Thursday morning to discuss the position. And I've met with Panama City manager, Mr. McQueen, yesterday to discuss the position, and I'm sending him the proposal tonight. So actively pushing this with other communities, what I think will be the common, the thing that's going to, it's going to take, someone's got to do it first.
Right.
To make it really, because other communities are going to say the same thing. Well, if you get someone else to say yes, and then you say yes, and it's just going to drag on, and we're kind of missing out on opportunities to continue to get things done.
Well, but, you know, I think it's fair to say, but at the same time, if it's a good deal, a great deal, or a wonderful deal, people don't hesitate.
Agreed.
Okay, so with that said, I'll, you know, share my thoughts with the community and for the record that I think it's a good idea, and I support that we need people in those positions helping and assisting the city to find these pots of money that may be available to us. But I think the fair way to do that is to work under a percentage. If you find the money, you get some of the money, and we get the majority of the money. It's like a grant writer. And I realize that's not how you usually do business. My other suggestion was that you make a proposal to the city based on a performance expectation of your company. In other words, I know you discussed finding four million dollars in the Carolinas for a small community. So I think your track record shows and indicates that you can be productive, but I would be more inclined to support hiring you with a proposal that you guarantee you'll find an X number of dollars, and then based on what you find, we'll set the salary at that amount. Then if we look at it a quarter of the way in and you haven't produced the amount of money, then we're going, we would cut you loose. But I'm not comfortable with entering into a year-long agreement when, in reality, you don't have to produce anything other than collecting the data and things. And I think it needs to be said that we are currently in a situation with the city of St. Joe where we have department heads that have been told we cannot hire people, we will not hire people. We have police department that needs a person. I think they need three, but we definitely are down a patrol officer. We have one or two in nearly every department, so I just can't support hiring another body, especially when I think there would be some overlapping based on what I've read about your company and what you, what you produce and the funding that you find. I think it would be overlapping with the PA that I believe we'll probably enter into some type of agreement.
Yes, and so the, I think we disagree about a few things. The only thing that I would highlight where I see this differently is in the difference between grant writer and this position. This position is not solely based on funding. I mean, you can't rebuild houses without money, and so that will be a key component. But what we are bringing to the table is not just looking for funding, but looking for funding that means direct needs of the community and then building the programs where that money can be used properly based on experience in those programs. So whether it be home repair programs, which SVP as an organization, that's a big part of what we do. We've rebuilt sixteen hundred homes. We've run grant programs where we grant funds to other organizations. We've set up city programs where cities have gathered dollars and then allow residents to apply for assistance, and nonprofit organizations or subcontractors do the home repairs. And so that is a level of knowledge and experience that most grant writers will not have, and we don't want to set our incentives for success for this position based to be on dollars. We want it to be based on housing recovery. And so that's just slightly the difference. This person will not be an expert grant writer, though there are members of our team who are, and if we need to apply for grants to get assistance, we will help do that, which we've done in the past. And that's all part of achieving the goal, but it's just, that's the, that's the difference that I would highlight. But I agree, we want goals that are shared and set by the city commission, and if y'all feel that we are not meeting it, it would be hap, I would expect that you terminate our relationship.
And would that thirty-two thousand be an upfront cost? Is that paid monthly? How does that, how did you?
We're very flexible on how we can make that happen. If it needs to be upfront, that's great. If we'd like to break it into installments or monthly, I'm not overly concerned about that.
So when you say the city would have the liberty of setting a goal?
Yes, sir.
We would, are you saying that I could set a goal and ask the commissioners to support a goal of, let's say, five million dollars recovery within the year, and failure to meet that goal would be the reason for terminating the contract?
I would appreciate a goal, but I would appreciate a goal based on data and need and understanding. I don't want to set a standard where we're going to set a goal here for that need when, and that when we don't have set goals for the recovery of the community. It just feels arbitrary. So I would ask that we have a separate conversation once we give you data, the report of what the needs are. I would have a, prefer a goal in terms of how many homes that this position helps rebuild in the community.
Oh, I would be open with that.
Something like that, right.
Because that's dollars.
Exactly. That will be dollars.
Sure. I'd rather, I'd rather talk about how many houses will you rebuild? Out of the, what did you say, sixteen hundred houses, if your company has rebuilt in the past, how many have been rebuilt in the state of Florida?
How many have been rebuilt in the state of Florida? Zero. We have two currently in construction. So we've started in New Orleans, and we've worked in New Jersey, New York, Puerto Rico, West Virginia, South Carolina, North Carolina, recently in Florida for Hurricane Michael, Texas, and Missouri after the tornado in Joplin, Missouri.
Have you entered into an agreement with any local, and I mean local within a couple hundred miles of Port St. Joe, in the past for the past storm?
We provided support for Irma for other rebuilding organizations in the Pan, not in the Pan, in the peninsula area, specifically Team Rubicon and Salvation Army, which we're doing rebuilding.
Right, I'm aware that you had...
But we haven't done an agreement like this before.
Yeah, like an agreement like this.
That's correct.
Have you already spoke to the city of Mexico Beach?
We have not. I have reached out to Mayor Kathy and unfortunately haven't heard back from him much. We are very interested in helping.
So you've approached Mexico Beach and haven't heard back. You approached Gulf County and haven't heard back. Have you approached the city of Port, Panama City?
Yes.
What was the response?
So I met with city manager McQueen yesterday, and we talked about all of these items, and I'm sending him the proposal tonight.
Would there be any negative effect to the city of St. Joe if we actually held back until you did enter into an agreement with another municipality?
Well, it would prevent us from getting to work.
Well, I understand that, but I would be comfortable, we would then get, be guaranteed our price would be cut in half. Did you speak to the city of Weahatchee?
I have not.
I mean, I'd be, I'd be comfortable today if what I'm hearing from the board is accurate. If we could accept this contingent on another city jumping on board, he can go to another city and say, look, I've got somebody else, so the price will be half if you accept it, and then we'll be on board as soon as, as soon as he gets someone else on board.
Well, I don't know if I'd be completely comfortable with that. I would be more comfortable with if coming back with a proposal, knowing that someone else had signed on, but I'm still going to be steadfast in, in only supporting a contract with some type of guaranteed results. I think that that's the way this business is usually handled, and I think that's the safest approach, because again, we've put our own departments on hold. This is not something that has to be done at this time. I think that there will be other people approaching the city. As a matter of fact, there's been multiple people approaching the city and offering services very close to what you're offering. I think you represent a good company, a sound company. I'm just not comfortable in, in telling our department heads that they can't hire someone, and then we turn around and hire someone.
I agree with Commissioner Hoffman. I thought about it in thirty-two thousand dollars a couple of, a couple of meetings ago, I asked about Mr. Helping with the code enforcement, and city manager said that it couldn't be done because of the money issues. We also need help in the water department, wastewater, water treatment, and right now I don't think it's a good time for us to put money into an entity that, that, well, I think we just need to think about it a little more. I would like for more municipalities to be added on to cut the price, but right now, thirty-two thousand dollars, we need help in other parts, other departments of the city. I just can't agree with it right now, but if we get somebody else to join on with us, I'd be happy to, because I really believe that we need people with experience dealing with the recovery of our city, and we need it, we need it now, you know? So that's how I feel about the situation.
And I don't disagree with what you're saying, and I would never advocate that we take money out of our operating funds to fund this position, but I'll go back to, you know, I think right after the storm, Jim made a... But I'll go back to, you know, I think right after the storm, Jim made it clear, the city's responsibility is to restore the utilities and provide public safety. We do not have an obligation to the citizens to help the indigent. We can't help the elderly. We can't help the people that can't help themselves. It's not in our purview. And with FEMA recently having pulled out their office, SBA pulled out their office, I think that this kind of is that stopgap. I think it is our responsibility to do what we can to try to help the citizens that can't help themselves. And if, and if we can do anything to help that by spending a little bit of that BP money, I'm all for it 100% today. I think that it's something that we owe to our citizens to try to help them recover. And this isn't to help, you know, people just rebuild their houses if they've got the means to do it. I'm sure that's not what this program's about. It's about the people that can't do it themselves. It's about the people that had to leave that don't have the money to rebuild to come back. This is going to help grow our population back, help increase ad form tax value in the community. I just, I don't want to see us just worrying about roads and utilities. We need to be thinking about the people that can't help themselves, and I think that's what this position is going to help with.
I understand that, and that's true, what you're saying. I think I need a little bit more time to think about it, though. I just don't want to jump into it. You're exactly right. We need to try to help people, our citizens that can't help themselves, and that's very important. It's important to have somebody in that position with that knowledge to, to help with that, you know? And I'm not, I'm not saying no, that I won't completely, I don't completely agree with it, but I'm just saying I just need a little extra time, more time to just think about it before I just agree with it right now.
I'm the same way. And I believe, again, if we can, you can bring on more municipalities, I think you might find us in a different position.
$16,000 is half of $32,000, so totally understand that. Yeah. But thank you for coming.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Didn't we lift the hiring trees? Weren't we advertising for health now?
We have started back, yes, sir. We're working on, our financials are looking better. We are working on trying to hire some people back, yes. So we are down. Kevin's shop is down. John's shop's down. We have a new position for chief. We have a field code enforcement, two in City Hall. So we're working back through those. And I think y'all brought some valid points on here today, on here to try to use the BP money for, this is a different aspect. Like I said, our core functions are, from city staff pretty much, is water, sewer, public safety, and Rose Street from Auction Reg. So this does bring in a different aspect in here, something we're not, we're not familiar with. I don't declare to know about housing recovery and those efforts to help the citizens of Port St. Joe on the private side that, yes, does need to be looked at. But looking at this too, I think if you bring in another municipality or the county, then you can look at it geographically. Can we look at our whole county to look at the housing issue countywide instead of just citywide? Because we consider ourselves one community. The folks that live 10 miles outside our community are family and friends too. So I think if you look at that and look at Mexico Beach as well, you might be able, if we could get Mexico Beach, the county, and Weewahatchika, geographically, you can fix the, a major problem that we have with housing. That was a valid point, Sean.
I mean, I'm with Mark, you know, I think we need it. Evidently, now is not quite the right time, but if you can get those municipalities to come on board, then, I mean, I'd be willing to vote for it, with the, you know, saying we wouldn't do it if you didn't get none of them. I mean, that's a pretty well knocking in the bud as far as, you know, if we get it along. Evidently, you know, we don't, we don't have enough members willing to go that route right now. But again, I wish you would try to work with the county, talk to the administrator, assistant administrator, Michael Hammond, Mr. Jaeger, and explain to them what you got, that you've already talked to us, and we're willing to do it. We just want some help. We don't want the whole $32,000 to fall on us. Even though I think BP money could serve a good purpose there. It wouldn't hurt our operating funds at all to take BP money out. But just not the time, I guess.
Well, I appreciate the time, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioners and members, and I will, more work to do here, and I will be back. Please keep in touch, so we know how that proposal goes.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item we have, Mayor, Representative Hurricane Michael, Public Assistant Consultant. We briefly touched base on this a few minutes ago. Did have the opportunity to sit down with county staff to interview applicants for this position here. To my understanding, the last county commission meeting, they did move along, offering a contract to CDR, which is page 12, just an indication of who the company is. They actually, to my understanding, also have a contract with Bay County, which brings a lot of resources. They have an office set up at Bay County, so if you can pull into different resources as you need. What I would ask today is that you allow staff to work on a contract with the city attorney to present to CDR. Basically, what the idea would be to work, hire them and use them as needed. So you're not going to have to pay them per day or per month, per year. It'd be basically whatever the board needs help with. It may be Mike needing help with getting all the documentation finalized, looking to serve through FEMA, could be working on some type of grant.
And would they even work on grants?
That is one aspect. They do have some people to help out with there. What we need to do is we need to compile a list of things that you would like for them to help you out with, and we can, probably what we need to do is have a meet and greet, bring them on board, and that way you can have an opportunity to talk to these people if it's something you want to move forward on.
Did we ever get our grant writer in the paper in Tallahassee and places?
Yes, sir, we have sent a check. We had to prepay for them, but it's to be in the Panama City News Herald. Also, I spoke with Florida League of Cities, owned it. They have not responded to my call, and I've left two messages.
All right, thank you.
Yes, we did that as an R and Q to Mayor. That way, large companies that do this every day for a living hopefully would apply for it.
Right.
It's down for your consideration today for a public assistant consultant. Staff recommendation would be to go with CDR, which is the same one the county has elected to.
And I think that that's what we need to be focusing on, is through this whole recovery process, we've worked hand in hand with the county. And I think we have benefited, and I think we need to continue on that same course. So I will make a motion at this time to allow staff to enter into agreement or work on an agreement alongside with the county for hiring this public assistant.
All right. We got a motion from Commissioner Hoffman. Second.
Second.
Or Commissioner Ashbrook. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five eight.
The next item is in reference to residential roadside pickup. We got an extension, which is great news for us through five one, so we need to make sure everybody for, this is only residential, to make sure they have it out to the road by May the first on that, so it'll be picked up. We got an extension on it, which is good news. Mr. Grant and his staff, along with county staff, have been working through our parks too. If you can, I'll pretend to go and look at the bayfront parks. There's still a lot of work to be done, but these guys have done tremendous effort. Baseball got kicked off this past week. Never would have thought we would have got to use those parks, but they're operational. I think the kids are having a good time.
Definitely. John lists that, and we all appreciate it. Certainly, we get the calls, no doubt, and we call you guys, and, I mean, we appreciate it, we really do.
Sure do.
Jim, are we prepared to run the debris pickup again as soon as that's over?
Yes, sir, I think we actually run it for two days, and we got the good news, one day.
One day.
Yes, sir, we, we started the truck, got gassed up, run it one day, and we got some help, so we got it ready to go. The last item I have under Hurricane Michael's, letter support. Ms. Joanna White's here today. She's working on a grant for the county for the Washington Gym. So she would like to, quiz, if we get a letter support, staff recommendation that we help the county with a letter support to apply for a grant for the Washington Gym. The roofs, the roofs were put on two weeks ago. There was a few leaks. I talked with the guys. We went back, they went back again within just a few days, and all indications are the leaks are fixed at the Washington Gym. So we think we have the roofs completely done at Washington Gym. So at this point, I think it'll be appropriate to make a motion to give them a letter support to complete the efforts at the Washington Gym.
And that's a good example of why the city also needs the grant writer, because we have a county grant writer helping the city find a grant in city. So if you would like to apply for that job. Well, and thank you for finding this brand.
So moved.
Oh, we got a motion from Commissioner Ashbrook. Have a second?
A second.
Second, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries five eight.
Thank you, Joanna.
Please agree.
The next item we have in reference, new business, planning board membership. We have two members that are planning to roll off of that board on there. This would get you down to seven, which you had nine before. Talking with your chairman, he feels it'd be appropriate to keep it at seven if it's okay with the board on there just to accept these two as coming off your board on there. That way you get it down to seven.
Yeah, I completely agree with staff. I'll make a motion just to stay with seven.
All right, we got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? I think seven's enough. Yeah, I really do. Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries five eight.
The last item we have, Mayor, that I have under new business is R and Q 2019-03. This is the Buckrift and Lake Walken bridges. We did go out to bid for those. Mr. Smallwood helped us put the specs together, so he's been working hard on that. Unfortunately, we only got a response back from one potential bidder, and the number was almost a quarter million dollars. So we wanted you to see the numbers, to see what we're up against. We knew there was going to come a time where we're going to have to make some hard decisions to what we put back, and some things we may have to put back for a couple of months to see if we can get some more bidders, work on the bid specs, to see what we need to do. But staff recommendation this time is to table this and let us see about going back out to bid for it. But we wanted you to see what we're up against. Anything you want to elaborate on it, Schmoll?
Yeah. Did you draw in maybe like a drawbridge or something?
Well, I saw the number, I went back to make sure, call it out a platinum or titanium, but it's just a timber bridge. But it's just, it's a supply and demand issue. Contractors are busy. We're seeing it Mexico Beach, we're seeing it on projects we're bidding across the Panhandle. It's contractors are busy, they've got a huge backlog, and prices are high. It's just what it is.
I'll make a motion to table, and if you guys will send it down to the insurance company, that number.
Yeah, I did not send it in, but I certainly can request it would fall under our inland marine coverage, and see what response we get from them.
We got a motion from Commissioner Hoffman. Second. Second, Commissioner Ashbrook. Any further discussion? Anybody in the public? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries five eight.
That's all I had, Mayor.
That's it? All right. John?
I have nothing, Mayor, unless there's questions for me from the board.
Any questions for John? All right. Larry?
Mr. Mayor, nothing at this time, unless there's questions.
Any questions for Larry? Kevin?
Nothing. Just some questions for me.
Anybody? Finally, Mr. Rick.
But to follow up on the Washington Gym discussion, the grant, I do have an appointment with the company that installed the flooring, the sport court. He's coming in next week to look at that. There is some play in the flooring, and he surmises that the underlayment probably was compromised from all the water. So he'll take a look at it, give us some idea of what we can do to tighten up the surface on the court, and then I'll report back to you. So that meeting's next week. We're moving along with, with insurance and FEMA still. FEMA is, is close on the Maddox House, and they asked for some guidance from us as to what we plan to do. So we've had some discussion internally, and so I think all along we've been telling FEMA we're not going to rebuild the Maddox House, but they want to know what we're going to do with that property. Certainly, we need a bathroom for that area, but we don't have an outdoor bathroom in that area. And then, so we all ask that you all think about that property and, and what we might want to do with that. We did receive $64,000 from the insurance company and $12,000 for the bathroom, so $79,000, $80,000 from the insurance company. We have received that, that money. So just wanted to ask you to start thinking about that property and how we might addition it in the future.
Okay.
And that's all I had, Mayor.
Any questions for Mike? All right, City Engineer.
Just kind of one update for the board. You saw Eighth Street has been paved, and so the last two items that they still owe you is Striketha Eighth Street, Striketha Williams, and they'll catch those. It looks like you got about $54,000 left. We were thinking maybe a little under on Eighth, and we did, we came in a little under on that. So you got about $54,000 that's city money as part of the road bond that will need to be allocated to something. In the past, one of the roads you talked about was Vault Cell in front of kind of Capital City and the tennis courts at Frank Bay Park. That road, obviously very busy with boat, trailer parked in there, and it's in rough shape. So that would be something, I think that was like $20,000, $25,000, we can fix that, so you certainly have money to do that if you wanted, plus something else, if you've got something in mind. Something for you to think about, you don't have to decide tonight or today, but they're, they're ready to finish out that project with whatever, whatever road or two roads you want.
Would they move right from Eighth Street project straight to a new road if we had that road picked out?
We could get on schedule, yes, sir. I mean, I don't think it's months out. I mean, they would catch it, you know, in the next several weeks.
Yeah, I think that was, while they're here with the equipment, I definitely support repaving that little area you just described. It is tore up, full of bottles.
It is bad.
So maybe if we could agree that that would be the next road that they go to.
I'm glad, too. I know, I know we've got an issue as of right now on Garrison, and we might, if we can fix that problem, John, maybe?
Uh, John, in the hatch?
Well, that patch, right at Tenth Street?
Uh, yes, right there, right before, correct. We've fixed that point repair, but it just needs to be patched now.
Okay. Well, if they can help with that, because that's a brand-new road. I say brand-new, it's two years old.
Probably, if those are two you got in mind now, that's great, but probably, if y'all don't mind voting on that, just since it's road bond and all of that, for the Vault Cell in front of the tennis courts and then the patch on Garrison, we certainly have money to do both of those, and you'll have a balance left also.
Anybody have any, anything else?
There's two, there's two patches on, there's one on Long Avenue, right, there's one where you're coming right by Fairpoint, I mean, consolidated, it's closer toward 71, there's one where you hit right there.
Oh, yeah. Third, is that John's patch?
Four. Four, three. That actually, that is supposed to be paved anytime.
Okay.
That was done by contractor. We received the money from the contractor for the damage, so he's actually paying for that.
Okay. What about 20th and Monument? There was some sewer work done there, I think, and there's a big dip. It's like an inverted speedboat over there right now.
20th and Palm?
20th and 19. That isn't, that might be where it's at.
Long?
Long Avenue?
Oh, yeah.
That's not possible.
20th and Palm.
Palm.
There was a storm crossing.
Yeah. Had to dig up the road.
Uh, we, it's patched, but.
Oh, it's patched?
Yeah. I don't know the scene.
It sunk.
It has?
Yeah.[1679.54] Yeah.
It's a little rough.
Is that what I thought, just below the catheter, not Brian type? Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about. Yeah, that, I think the field just keeps coming out of it. I'll make a motion to approve those projects.
All right, we got a motion, Commissioner Esposito.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hoffman. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries five zero.
That was all I had, Mayor, unless there were questions.
Just tell them to stop working when they've ate up that fifty-four thou.
Yes, sir.
Eighth Street looks good.
Where we at with the bridge there between Eighteenth and Nineteenth? Anything being done on it, or is that including that other? You know, Long Walken?
In the Palm. Nothing that we can work on.
I think we got, John got his quotes, and we stopped.
We did.
Tried to determine if we wanted just pedestrian or golf cart.
It definitely needs to be a golf cart to go major. Major for golf carts also, obviously, alike anyway. So we're sort of looking at that, we're looking at both ways, but I think golf carts should be, you know, it's a perfect cut through for golf carts to get off of Long Avenue to go farther down that way. They won't have to get on Long Avenue.
Appreciate it, Paul.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Please, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. I don't have anything on the agenda. Board has questions?
Any questions for the chief of management?
No questions.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Of course, I told them, of course, that I reported, everybody sees it and reads it. Ms. Shaw?
Yes, sir, we have tentatively suggested the dedication of the Langston Drive sidewalks for Tuesday, May the seventh at ten a.m. It would be prior to a meeting. Is that acceptable to all of you?
Sounds good.
Yeah, so that'll work out good.
I want to make sure, Commissioner Langston, you get your family there for this dedication. And anybody that helped work on that being done, if you don't say to the committee to help make that project come, we invite you to be there, and all citizens that want to come. That's something that's really been needed for a long time. People walk there all the time, and they've had to walk in the highway. Now they've got a sidewalk to walk on, and it looks, it looks great. It sure does.
I like to thank, thank everybody responsible for it, it really means a lot. I'm sure my dad would be proud, you know, and I just like that, see, I appreciate it.
We'll proceed with that data and notify appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Citizens to be heard. Anyone in the audience want to be heard today? Over here first.
I've talked about the issue.
Oh, my name is Biden, Deputy Bell. I must have had the same too. That young man there was talking about construction, about the patches in the road. There's one, was knocked a heap, the one on Garrison, has been undone by the weather. And then, something else I saw about, maybe three or four months ago, I was coming down Long Avenue as it was raining. It was raining pretty good, and I had to stop for another guy that supposed to know how to drive, couldn't see the lines. Those lines, these scratches bad. When the weather is bad, the lights from the streets illuminate the highway, and then if the white lines are not clear, you're not gonna see. Well, the police, if I wasn't kind of driver I was, he could have run into me, but he's supposed to be trained. I'm not talking about the guy, but he was not driving properly. But what I'm saying is a lot of things for his construction in the city could be taken care of.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Anyone else? Come on up.
Pat Hardman and Cassie Studstow, we are representing the citizens of Gulf County Recovery Committee, and are requesting a letter of support. We aren't asking for money, we're asking for help. We are, we are working on the immediate needs. I've worked closely with FEMA. We've had World Renew in here for two, about ten weeks to try to get us focusing on the rest of the unmet needs. Our estimation is as high as ninety percent of the county had housing either severely damaged or displaced or something to do with it. And of course, our group is, works with the ones who are unable to help themselves. We'll have that report for you on Thursday afternoon. We're getting that from World Renew, and we'll certainly share it with you. And anytime we have a lot of doubt, we'll share with you as well. But we looked at both the, from a housing committee standpoint, which is what my chair was, the Housing and Construction. We looked at the immediate needs, and that's being addressed, and we're fighting with all those little government people y'all are, but.
Excuse me?
But.
You got it, I hear you.
But we also had to, our group also looked at long-term needs. We're gonna dig our way out of this thing, and we want to be going in the right direction. And so we got out to some of the philanthropic, not government agencies, or private agencies, to see if they could help us out in any way, and we're still working in that regard. Cassie Studstow here is on our committee, and she took on a task to try to find something for long-term planning, comprehensive planning for the St. Joe area. Those will be, American Institute of Architects was who she found, and they have a regional urban design and assistance program, which they have done hundreds of times. Look, Cassie, she's, that's above my pay grade, all they've done. But she's got, there was sixty thousand dollar charge, she's got in that way, so that we would be able to apply a grant without any cost to us. We've met with different people, we've met with Jim Anderson, we've met with Bowlin and Phil Kennedy and Chamber of Commerce, and Warren at the county, and EDC Director at the county, and we tend to meet more. We're trying to bring everybody on board. We have a lot of little plans going on, not really big plans, but a lot of individual plans going on throughout the south Gulf County area. If we can get this group to come in and coordinate and help us with the expansion, look at the tourism side, look at the industry side, look at the business side, individual side, then we will be way ahead of the game at no cost. Of course, we involve the city and.
Oops. Four, that was just three minutes, we need a motion.
Motion to extend the time.
We got a motion?
Thank you.
I'll say it, go ahead.
So there will be, we're getting ready to write the grant, we'll be writing this grant from those citizens of Gulf County, long-term recovery. And the, all the members on the steering committee will be local, they'll be people and stakeholders, we'll have individuals, there's a lot of community involvement to get this done. But I'm gonna ask you for letter of support, and I'm gonna let Cassie fill in the blanks.
Is this the committee that met at the Methodist Church?
Yes, sir.
Originally, and formed the group?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure that's.
Been, been working quite a bit with the.
Ms. Abrams is.
Vicki Abrams is the chair.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'm chair of housing committee.
So since nineteen sixty-seven, the American Institute of Architects, AIA, the Center for Communities by Design, has been sending in national teams to partner with local communities in need such as rebuilding after disaster or economic downturn, and helping them to create a vision for the future. They bring in the power and the resources of a customized team of multi, interdisciplinary, multidisciplinary experts to partner and transform the communities. To date, they've done it in over two hundred communities, with pro bono design assistance and a community-driven planning process, committing experts and community members to discuss community design and sustainability. It's a win-win. Communities gain economically and socially, and they gain attention and recognition, which is going to be critical for funding in the future. The program is internationally recognized and has received several awards. At the end of February, I reached out to the AIA and asked for their help. And the next morning, I immediately received an email back from the director of Communities by Design and said, hey, you're the only community that's reached out, that's been affected by Hurricane Michael as of date, and yes, we fully support what you're doing. So, the program is the Regional Urban Design Assistance Team. It's a highly flexible program, it works for communities of all sizes, from small towns and districts to major metropolitan regions, and it helps to find design solutions for communities that are experiencing struggles. Through a series of community activities and evaluation, they assemble a volunteer team of experts from around the country to help us achieve a community-wide vision, and then they create and present an actionable, it's a phased, implementable plan for moving forward in the future, with the big saying, clear pathways for funding. Okay? They've got a proven track record of helping small rural communities, and with a goal of short-term goal of stabilization, long-term goal of sustainability, and basically it's creating a big public platform to help release the burden from the local government while engaging local government in the process. Again, and it helps us identify the funding sources that we need to accomplish this.
Motion to extend the time.
Have a motion, have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second.
Basically, it all starts with an application, and we've been working on that, and the first thing that we're doing is collecting letters of support from as many community leaders, neighborhood groups, churches, businesses, institutions, and you all, in the city of Port St. Joe. So we need your blessing. If you take a look in the package that I give you, there's a sample letter attached, and basically something along the lines of, we the city, we the commissioners of the city of Port St. Joe, wholeheartedly support the efforts of the citizens of Gulf County Recovery Team and our application for a RUDAC with the AIA. We believe that it's important for our citizens to not only be able to live, work, and play in our city for foreseeable future, but to prosper. All voices in our community have right to be heard, and we should be, and should be heard, and it is our duty as commissioners to understand, respect, and carry that forward. We must also be cognizant of the needs of our business owners, and recognize that while some may not live within their city limits, their needs and concerns carry weight. Our city is rich in history, and our citizens abundant in spirit, and we look forward to working with the AIA team to encapsulate both into a cohesive vision and plan of growth for our future. We look forward to an approved application, so we can embark upon exciting the process and rebuilding Port St. Joe stronger than ever, together. That's just an example, you can use your own, but we're asking for something like that so that we can move forward, put the application together, move on to the next step, approval, and then from there.
Who pays for their services?
Pro bono.
So they do all the designing and engineering work and no charging?
They, it's between planners, architects, economists, some of these RUDACs that they've done have actually thirty different disciplines from across the globe that are experienced in doing this. For example, Birmingham after tornadoes, they came and did one there. Hellsburg, California, they did a RUDAC in nineteen eighty-two, and last year, they went back in two thousand seventeen and did an ASCAP. So it's three different programs. The first program that it's a start with is a RUDAC, and they have offered to step up to the plate, and they heard our cry for help.
It will be going through our nonprofit Citizens Gulf County Recovery Team. So if we're, it will be going through that, and that's where Cassie was able to get them to waive the fees that this thing will cost. So basically, we're asking for a support letter, you'll be involved every way, shape, or form that you will be or can be. Without your support letter, we're pretty well down.
So you're asking us to approve you to help us for free?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on board with that.
Yeah, I'm buying a letter of support. Jim, do you have anything?
No, I say a letter of support on there, if it would be appropriate, it sounds like it's for.
I'll make a motion that we approve the letter.
Got a motion, Commissioner Hoffman?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Lawrence. Any further discussion from the board?
I just have one thing, and I love it, I think it's great. There's been a lot of people approaching us about this, where my only fear, guys, is if you get multiple groups working on the same thing, this is where a coordinator comes in. If we, because I have in this, in your little packet here, I didn't get it on the agenda for this meeting, University of Florida wants to just do a study, all they're asking for is a letter of support. I just want to make sure that the expectations are, you know, that you're giving us information that we can do with what we wish, we can pick and choose from all these different plans that we may give letters of support for, but just so you know, there's other organizations that are.
But the other organization is not going to be made up of our own local people.
Correct, correct.
This is representing a group, and that's why I asked, are you who I think you are?
Yes.
And that's the group, I attended that meeting, and Jim and I kind of set the tone of what their task was, and it's very long, it's very complicated, but to see local people representing the locals, I'm good with it.
Right, that's why, everybody's going to be local, involved in the process.
Okay, right.
And, I mean, except you gotta have these outside people, I mean, not that, but we're gonna try to expand out the steering committee, but that steering committee's gonna be totally local people, businesses, churches, everybody we can get to the table. We're very, you know, inclusive, you know, Citizens Recovery Team, we'll keep it that way, but you will have, you know, some degree of, y'all tell us sometimes, there are a lot of people trying to do different things, and this is an effort to try to get those different people to come in with their different things to make support.
And that's kind of where I was leading to, these other groups that come in, we should direct them to this long-term group, and they can work with y'all.
Right.
And on top of that, one of the key requirements of the plan is to work with a, at least a college or university. I didn't know anything about the US.
University of Florida.
But I reached out to FSU, spoke to their, I believe it's a graduate program in their planning and urban development department. He loved the idea, so he was gonna float it to all the other departments and to the dean. So, you know, whether we're working with, this is an incredible opportunity and encouraged by the AIA, is to work with schools and get them involved in the process.
It'll be easier to get a Seminole helping us. When you said something about ULA, well, that's.
Isn't that what you said, ULA?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that was Commissioner Asher suggesting hiring University of Florida.
Well, you know, FSU's in our backyard, they were affected by the hurricane as well. You know, my husband went to FSU.
We're not gonna, but if we could have.
Whichever, yeah.
Yeah, if we can have them have these types of different ones.
Right.
Come through us, if we can get this grant, then we've got some coordination as opposed to everybody running off in different directions. That's the whole idea, is to try to get something in front of you that's comprehensive, that everybody, all these others can agree to.
And.
I appreciate your help.
And top of that is bringing everybody to the table and working together, so we're all working towards this one goal, one common goal.
All right. We got a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Hoffman, anybody opposed the motion? Motion carries five oh.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right. Anyone else in the public with to speak? Hang on over here.
Good afternoon, my name is Ken Miller. I'm with the Port St. Joe Community Garden. Sign in here. Eric, did you want to go ahead, did you want to go ahead and speak to the group for us , Eric?
Basically, we, we've been meeting, we came up with a budget, and we wanted to present it to the board, to, just to get any kind of help that we can get. We're gonna have, it's gonna be volunteer, people that volunteer, donate money, and things of that nature, but basically, this is what it's gonna take for us to get this, get this community garden done. We're working hard on this, and you can explain it, go ahead and explain to them, basically, what's going on.
First of all, I'd like to thank, I would like to thank Mr. Grantland for getting us adequate help out there to get started on this project. It was brought to the commission by Mr. Langston at the last commission meeting or the one before that, and we've appreciated the support, for the board voted unanimously to support this project. At this time, we've organized, we've installed officers, we've added two new members to our group. We have insurance that is gonna be received under the Washington Improvement Group, they've agreed to take care of that for us, an amount of eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents.
The city, the city is, the city is gonna take care of the insurance.
Are they gonna do that?
But Mr. Esposito had an idea that, that we talked about, you want to explain it to him?
Yeah, the insurance, as I was told, would have to be held by a nonprofit, and I asked Commissioner Langston if the Garden Club might be willing to purchase the policy, and we did a non-governmental funding in our budget every year for the cost of the insurance policy, since we all agreed to pay for the insurance.
So the city pays for it, but it's just falls underneath the five oh one?
Right, we wouldn't hold the policy.
Okay, gotcha. So would that be then under the Garden Club, or that we?
Yeah, what we'll do, we'll put it on the Garden Club. We'll talk to them, we just can't automatically do it, but we'll, I will talk with the Garden Club and see if that's possible. I think it'll be easier, it makes it easier for the city and Garden Club and all of us to work together.
Right, and at the same time, we are researching to set ourselves up as our own five oh one C three organization, so moving forward, which also brings me to another point we've already set for our Facebook page. We'd ask you to like it and share it, to get the word out for us. And we, after we establish ourselves as a five oh one C three, or get approval for the Garden Club, we'll put a donate button on there, so hopefully we'll be self-sustaining as far as our expenses from there on out. And also, one other item, Trish Warner has organized for a gentleman by the name of James Farmer, he's a master gardener, and he's also an interior designer. He's agreed to come speak at the Port St. Joe Garden Club in the immediate future, and tickets will be insulted to that, and all proceeds are going to fund the community garden, all the proceeds. And so there is a budget in front of you for the estimated total of two thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars. Those are our estimated expenses, and that has a detailed, I'd advise, list what those expenses. our estimated expenses. And that has a detailed itemized list of what those expenses include.
Are you going to also offer like, where people can pay for a portion or a square?
Exactly. It's going to be $50 a year. And we've kind of set up our template based on what Apalachicola has done. And they've got a wonderful community garden. They're getting ready to redo their plots over there, rebuild them. And it's self-sustaining now as well. And so, this one was established in 20, or it was, it was established prior to now. And I believe that it disorganized about 2013. So, we're kind of picking up where they left off, which has saved us a lot of money because a lot of the labor has already been done.
If you haven't seen Apalachicola's Community Garden, you need to go take a look at it. It's awesome. It's awesome. And that's what our goal is. I can imagine it right now. It's just beautiful to look at and go in, walk around. And it's just awesome. And I'm excited about it. We worked hard to get where we are right now, but we still have a long ways to go. And I would, what I would want to do was, the beginning budget, the city, if we could, take this call so that we can go ahead and try to plan and get started. I think we're trying to start planning in the fall, right?
Right. We're definitely not going to make the spring planning, but we're thinking the fall would be a reasonable goal for us.
I'll second Commissioner Langston's motion for the city to pick this bill up and get started.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I like to say this also. Those women have been working very, very hard. Their hearts are in this. And it's something that I had a goal to do this and they've come aboard and they took this thing and they're running with it. And I really appreciate you guys. And to staff, John, Jim, you guys, I appreciate the support that you give and also commissioners. Thank you.
All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries five up. Anyone else in the office? Come on. I saw that hand.
Yesterday, I attended the program at the library where Senator Rubio had one of his people come and speak to citizens six months later after the storm. The stories were still quite heartbreaking. And there are people that are living in their vehicles that can't seem to get into FEMA trailers and stuff like that. There were a couple of things. Number one, there were concerns about the future storm situation that we'll be facing this year, next year, on the night. And of course, it's supposed to be a regular pattern, like it was last year, about 13 storms. I would like for the city to start considering plans for this upcoming hurricane season. I think it's important because people are so vulnerable right now. How will they get out if they don't have proper transportation? So, really crucial. And that was kind of a take home yesterday. The other thing is dealing with people that are supposed to be legitimate business people and contractors. There seems to be some problems here around that. As well as, this is bigger, but it is a communication that I sent out today to Opportunity Florida because they spend a lot of time in Tallahassee trying to deal with issues for rural Florida. But one of the issues is, you know, a lender getting that insurance check. And in the state of Florida, from what we heard and understand, once the lender gets that check here in Florida, they make money off of the interest that that money accrues. That doesn't go back to the person that is trying to fix their house. So, there's been some issues with people trying to get inspections done at their house and going through the lender. And that process is slowed down. So, that can really impact, of course, what the properties are worth here. So, I did send forth a communication, a written communication, and I've copied Senator Monver on that as well. We really need the lenders to do the right thing for our folks that are trying to rebuild. And again, I think right now, we need to be working on plans for how we're going to deal with whatever comes our way as far as hurricane season. This was the last notice that was sent out before the storm. And it didn't include all of Port St. Joe to be evacuated. So, we may want to revisit that. Kristy McElroy, Woodward Avenue.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else? All right. Mr. Langston, what good is this?
The bridge, the bridge that's on Buckridge Park Link, I mean Buckridge Link. If we could, when you start to tear them down, could we salvage that wood? I have a people on the Community Garden Committee that wants to use the wood to maybe make some benches or whatever. So, once we start doing that, could we just save the wood, salvage it, put it over by the garden, whatever we have to do. It's probably going to be a while now since we found out what the bid was going to be, huh? But if, if, if we can do that, maybe, maybe it'd be before the fall, before we start planning or whatever. But just keep that in mind.
Okay.
I've got nothing here.
What do I have here? Mr. Lawrence?
Don't have anything.
Mr. Hoffman?
I'm good.
I have one thing. I was approached by the owner of EC, Sewer Service out of Gophier. He would like for us to set up a workshop. He has had, I think, Florida Rural want to do some studies for him. And he's wanting to talk to us about what they found. He would like to do it next Tuesday at noon. Is that acceptable to everybody? What day is that day?
Looks like the 23rd.
23rd.
I know. I won't, I won't be able to make that. But that means...
We can change it to, that day is bad for you or that kind of...
That day.
Sure, he would...
What about Monday?
Oh, I don't have a problem with Mondays. Anybody else have a problem with Monday instead of Tuesday? That 12, 12 noon right here?
I can do the 22nd.
How's that?
I can do the 22nd or the 23rd. My only suggestion would be, and I'm all in favor of workshops, you know, I'm going to support a workshop. Could we get the owners to agree to at least an updated evaluation of the property?
I mean, that might be what they're bringing to us. I'm not sure.
Okay. Because I think if we're going to look at that option, we have to, and you've heard me say it before, we have to evaluate the price based on the worth. And I think if you'll advise them that they really need to have some data as to what condition the structure is in. Because the figures that I have, and you should all have from 2014, talk about $267,000 of, of keep and maintenance. That was back then, pre-storm. So, I think it's fair. Because I'm all for looking at a purchase of something that ultimately could generate funding. But at the same time, I think we would agree that the general public, in Port St. Joe especially, already has looked at this deal as tainted. I don't know that they think it's a great idea. And I don't know, because I've only dealt with it for a year now. But I'm going to be, you know, pressed at looking at the actual figures, the data, all of the information. You've heard me say that I want to see the inspection reports for the last five years. That'll tell us a lot. How did the inspections go with DEP? But we have to be prepared for the voting citizens of Port St. Joe to push back on the issue unless we do our due diligence and have all of the information. That's all I would ask.
Yeah, I think, I think we spoke last time and I believe it was not more so a purchase, but I believe...
...under the ground. And I think when that was explained to the owners, they never responded back. Because I think what we're going to find out is they would want the city to take ownership of the plant and the pipes under the ground. And if that's the case, I mean, I'm, I'm out.
I would best of all is to take the plant. I think let's just have workshop.
Yeah, that's the key. Because everything's been done, you know, behind doors. And nobody wants to just talk about pricing or conditions of a workshop. I think it's a good idea. And I think we need to have it at a time and at a location that will accommodate a large group of people. Because I get asked about that deal yesterday at the school. Somebody used the word bamboozle. Don't let, don't give bamboozled. And I'm like, not on my watch. So, I think there'll be a lot of interest in the subject.
Mayor, Commissioners, y'all approve me appearing by telephone at this workshop?
Sure.
There's not going to be a vote on it.
That'll be...
Do we need a vote or just...
I'll agree.
We all agree. You can be on pause. That would be Monday at 12 noon. Then, if whatever comes out of that workshop, if we need to have another one or we invite more to public, I think that's what we should do. First, this is, and anybody...
...to come at 12 on Monday, the 23rd. So, anyway, with all that, I'm done. I need a motion to adjourn.
One second.